Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance for our City Council Meeting, January 11, 2024? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Thank you, Patty. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to our agenda tonight?
No, ma'am.
All right, lovely. We're going to start right with our announcements and presentations. So first, we're going to start with something that's close to all of our hearts. We have the check presentation tonight to Marsh Point Elementary School. I'm sure you all recall that a few months ago in September at our council meeting, our council asked our city manager to research and develop some criteria so that we could do an annual contribution of $5,000 to one of our public schools in Palm Beach Gardens. This would be on a rotating yearly basis over the next 10 years. And so during the November 2nd meeting, we entered, it was great, we had a bus-shaped hat. So we entered the names of all 10 public schools into that hat for the drawing. So each council member drew one name for each fiscal year, beginning in 2023 and ending in 2032. So the first school drawn has come tonight. So the first school drawn for fiscal year 2023 to '24 was Marsh Point Elementary School. So I'd like to call up Mr. Ryan Scott, the principal from Marsh Point Elementary School, to receive the check from our city council, sir. So come on up and congratulations. And just so you guys know, as he's coming up, we'll clap. But next up will be Pierce Hammack. I think he wants to get it in the budget right away, so off he goes. All right, so we also have a presentation tonight on Human Trafficking Prevention Month. So we have a proclamation under our consent agenda. So this evening, I'd like to call Susan Gladman, Representative from Palm Beach Section of the National Council on Jewish Women, to the podium, who will be giving us a short presentation on this subject. So there's a nice microphone right there. You should be all set to go.
Yes, I am fine. Thank you so much. And as you said, my name is Susan Gladman, and I am with the Palm Beach Section of the National Council of Jewish Women, which is a grassroots organization of volunteers that strives for social justice by improving the quality of life for women, children, and families by safeguarding individual rights and freedoms. January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I will be providing information on this issue of labor and sex trafficking of minors and the rising occurrence of sex extortion. Traffickers lure or trick teens and pre-teens in school, homeless shelters, parks, malls, and many other places, including on the internet through social media and through various apps, especially gaming apps. They seek out vulnerable kids, and they offer them friendship, food, shelter, and gifts. They build trust by isolating the minor from the family and friends. And when the minor is totally dependent upon the predator, they force, trick, or coerce them to provide sexual or labor services. During the year 2020 through 2021 in Palm Beach County, there were 64 reports of trafficking of minors, 50 of which were reports of commercial sexual exploitation and 14 of labor trafficking. A new twist to this scenario is extortion, which is a form of internet blackmail. The predator initiates a conversation via direct message or on an app, posing as a member of the same sex or the opposite sex. As the conversation develops, the predator sends a sexually explicit photo and asks for one in return. As soon as the target sends a revealing photo or video, the perpetrator then demands a medium payment of an amount of money out of reach for the minor victim. Threats by the perpetrator include posting the revealing photo or video on the internet, sending it to parents and friends. The perpetrator may also threaten to harm family members, friends, or relatives by using information they've obtained from the victim's electronic devices. Victims become terrified, ashamed, often unable to handle the stress of the situation. In fact, several high school athlete targets have committed suicide. We are reaching out to elected officials, residents, and persons working with or in contact with minors, middle- and high-school-age females and males, to educate them about the signs that a minor may be a victim to trafficking or sex extortion. And hopefully, that person will become the trusted adult that a minor can turn to before making these irreversible decisions. We hope through this appearance, word may reach park and recreation staff, coaches, librarians, educators, and other community leaders. I thank you for this opportunity, and I want you to know that we offer presentations for your staff, and we will custom presentations to meet everybody's needs. I will be leaving brochures on sex extortion, and on the back will be any information that you might need.
Thank you, Ms. Gladman.
Thank you for letting me present this.
If you want to, you can give the brochure to our city clerk over here on your right. Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing that with us. Next on the agenda, we have comments from the public. I do have one comment card for an item not on the agenda, and it is Ramona Bean. If you would please come up and state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Ramona Bean. I reside at 5439 Cicada Way, Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening, Mayor Reed and Vice Mayor Woods, councilmembers and city staff. Happy New Year, and as the year starts, I'm going to look back just a few weeks, and I want to say thank you. There's two big thank yous for Palm Beach Gardens, I'd like to say. One is Friday morning, December 8th, I was at Home Depot off of Northlake with my youngest child, my daughter Athena. Some of you may know her. She suddenly told me that she didn't feel well. And when I squatted down to check on her, she proceeded to faint in my arms. She came to a few seconds later, which felt like years, and she vomited and cleaned her up. And I said, "Okay, baby, we're going to go home," or, you know, "go to the doctor." But as I picked her up and was trying to leave Home Depot, she fell very limp in my arms and was unresponsive. So in that moment, I'm sure my spirit left my body, but I laid her down gently, and I called 911, okay? And the dispatch was awesome. Chief Shannon, it's a great job you got there. And you had a couple of your gentlemen that showed up within minutes, right away. As I was talking to dispatch, and once they got off and the cops were there, they spoke with me, they helped me with her when she came to, okay? And they helped keep her calm until the paramedics came to check on her. She's fine. We've gone through all the checks and the blood tests and stuff. But it was a very scary moment, and it's the first time I really actually had to reach out for help like that, so I just want to say thank you, okay? Also, just recently, there's a great partnership, I guess, between American Red Cross and the Burns Road Rec Center for lifeguards. So my eldest, this is about my youngest, my eldest today. Anyway, my eldest took part in the December 27th through 30th class. Of course, he's a burgeoning teenager, didn't like getting up and having to do all those classes, and a lot of, he was very sore, I was having to rub him down. But great staff you have there. They did a great job. I know everything's under construction, but we dutifully took him every day and picked him up, and he did great, and he graduated, so thank you. It was a great program and a great experience for my kids. So anyway, from our family to yours, thank you again. All right, happy New Year.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. We appreciate it. Next, we have our city manager report. Ron, do you have a report this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Just a couple of items that I'd like to bring to your attention. I'm sure you're aware of it, so that the public can be aware. First thing I'd like to show you is that we have our Gardens Green Market 22nd Annual Celebration this Sunday. And to celebrate that, we have a special presentation that was on the television the other day on Channel 25.
The Palm Beach Gardens Green Market is celebrating its 22nd anniversary. Hundreds of vendors will be there for the community to explore. Joining me now is the city's Leisure Services Administrator, Charlotte Przynski. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
22 years. What a milestone. So for people listening, what's going to be different about this anniversary, January 14?
So this year, we're celebrating our 22nd year. And what we did is we did a call to artists this year and asked them to do an artist's rendering of what they think the market represents. So Carol Anne Sally, who's actually a Palm Beach Gardens resident, will be on site exhibiting the art that she did for this year's anniversary.
Okay, so it sounds like it's the market from her eyes is how she did it.
Yes, exactly.
So through the years, tell us how it has changed really for the community.
So it's very interesting. When we started this market 22 years ago, I stood on top of a picnic table and wondered if anyone was going to show up. And now, weekly, we get 2,000 to 3,000 people. The market has grown significantly to over 100 vendors, so it's great.
And speaking of those vendors, talk about the type. We're looking at some right now. We see some produce out there. It looks like some spaghetti sauce there. Who comes out?
So for the market, you'll find families that come out and spend the morning with our music, and they buy prepared foods. We have people who do their grocery shopping, because you can get fresh vegetables. You can buy plants. It's just a wonderful community event.
What are some of the most popular items that people go by?
You know what? We have great vendors who've been with us those 22 years. So I would say our plants, orchids, people love the orchids, our fresh prepared foods. It's really a plethora of what you're shopping for.
All right, and speaking of that difference, this 22nd year, asking people to submit their art. What do you have here? A giveaway, right?
We do. So the artwork done by Carol Anne Sally is on this commemorative bag. So this is a reproduction, and the artist has signed them. So the first few hundred people will get this bag. We hope to do it every year as a new tradition, as part of our promotion of cultural arts along with the market. And then, if you don't get one of these, we have a reproduction for you.
I mean, beautiful.
Like to have, give you one.
Oh, thank you so much. And I think this is so important, because a lot of people like to reuse bags nowadays. So you can use it for just about anything, grocery shop. All right, and talk about performances.
So this year, every year we do, or every week, we do entertainment. But this anniversary, we are giving a nod to our local Palm Beach Gardens High School band. We wanted to help them raise awareness in the community as who we are or who they are and what they do. So they'll be our entertainment this week.
All right. Well, is there anything else you want to leave people with? Any information they need to know if they want to head out?
Sure. 8 to 1 o'clock every Sunday. We are open all year long. We do not close, so please join us every Sunday. It's a wonderful event for the community.
Get there early so you can get a bag like this. I can tell you, it's really nice, really good condition, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
We appreciate you for stopping by. And if you want any more information about the Palm Beach Gardens Green Market, just go to our website. We have an article up right now, and you can get all the details. Sandra?
I believe this celebration starts at 9:00. So I know the council will be there, ready to open the celebration. In addition to that, the long-awaited, and I'm going to say the word, pickleball courts are having a ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at 10:30. You can see the product here that is finished at this point. It took only five months for our staff and employees to be able to put this together. And it was, as we said, about $1.1 million, which we protected on budget under time. We've sold nearly 200 passes so far, and they're going like hotcakes every day. So for all of you, we hope to see you there tomorrow at 10:30. Those of you that want to show off your skills at pickleball should be prepared to do so, because we have arrangements for that. So those are the two items that I thought are of very significant importance to bring your attention and for the public to know of, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think Councilmember Middleton just challenged all of us to pickleball. Okay, be an interesting morning. Impressive. Thank you guys so much. All right, next along is the consent agenda. Do we have anyone pulling anything from the consent agenda this evening? No? All right. Oh, Marcy, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Oh, go for it. Yep.
I just did. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have motion and second. So we have no discussion, nothing else going on, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's move along to our public hearing. So we're going to start our public hearings with our quasi-judicial statement. So tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 302023 at second reading and adoption, which is a request for voluntary annexation. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials, which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to cross-examine, excuse me, to allow cross-examination of any witness who testifies tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please pull up a card and give it to our city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in any persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases. Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you all so much. If the clerk could please read the title for ordinance 302023.
Ordinance 302023, An Ordnance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Annexing Pursuant to a Petition for Voluntary Annexation, Eight Parcels of Rear Property Comprising a Total of 4.59 Acres, More or Less Located Approximately 0.21 Miles South of the Intersection of PGA Boulevard and Ellison-Wilson Road in Palm Beach County, Florida. As more particularly described herein and as depicted on the map attached here, too. Declaring that the voluntary annexation petition bears the signatures of the owners of the real property annexed hereby, amending Article II of the City Charter by redefining the corporate limits, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of State, the Palm Beach County Clerk of Court, and Palm Beach County, providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you, Patty. Let's open the hearing, and we'll start with ex parte. I'll start over here with Marcy. Do you have any ex parte tonight?
I do. I had a couple conversations with Joey Eichner, Dan Cattelfumo, and Cotty Rankin.
Thank you. All right.
None for me.
Dana?
No.
Carl?
Thank you.
All right, and I have none myself. Has anything changed since first reading?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No changes from first reading.
All right, lovely. So thank you, Martin. Do we have any one that, do we need another presentation? We don't have any comment cards. Do we have anything you want to discuss ahead? Nope. All right, so let's go ahead and close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 302023.
Second.
All right. Anything further from council? All right, let's take it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you guys so much. That was ordinance 30. Moving along, we're going to move along to ordinance 1, 2024. The clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance 1, 2024, An Ordnance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Approving a Text Amendment to the Future Land Use Element of the City's Comprehensive Land Use Plan to Modify Policy 1.3.9.3 of the Transit-Oriented Development TOD District to Include the Mira Flores Project in the TOD District List of Projects, Providing for Transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and Other Reviewing Agencies, Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date for the Purposes.
Thank you, Patty. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. I see we have Nicole Plunkett from Cutler and Hearing.
Good evening, council. Yes.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Nicole Plunkett with Cutler and Hearing. And for tonight's presentation, if it's okay with council, I would like to do a combined presentation with ordinance 1, Resolution 2, and Resolution 3.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council. Happy New Year, happy holidays. Nicole Plunkett with Cutler and Hearing. Tonight, I stand in front of you, excited to present a new multifamily redevelopment project that truly aligns with a lot of your Transit-Oriented Development TOD District guidelines within your comprehensive plan, and also really relates to your mobility plan as well. And so we're really excited to be here tonight. Before I dive into the details, I'd like to introduce Anna Pedraho. She is the Director of Development at GrayStar, who is behind a lot of this development project. And I would love to bring her up here to give you a little bit of an update on who GrayStar is, why they're here, and why they love Palm Beach Gardens. Anna?
Hi, I'm Anna Pedraho. As Nicole mentioned, I've been sworn in, and my address is 788 East Las Olas Boulevard in Fort Lauderdale. As Nicole also mentioned, I work on the development team at GrayStar. GrayStar is a privately-held company based in Charleston, South Carolina, who is in the multifamily space in a big way on the property management side, on the development and construction side where I sit, and on the investment side as well. GrayStar purchased Mira Flores apartments in 2018, and we've really just fallen in love with the Palm Beach Gardens community and, you know, this micro-location in the city as well. We think the adjacent retail is kind of second to none with what's at downtown at the Gardens. And there's just amazing employers who are expanding in the area, and those employees need more housing in the city. And we saw that, we saw that need, and, you know, we were excited that the city was interested in working with us on potential redevelopment of a 3.5-acre parcel that's fairly underutilized. It only has 32 townhomes currently. So it seemed like a logical place, given its location in the city, to increase density with a community that includes workforce housing units. And so we've worked with the city over the past two years, which has really flown by, and they've been, you know, it's been really fantastic working relationship. And we've ended up with a community that we feel really proud of and we think is not only going to be a fantastic place for those residents to live, but also benefits our existing community of Mira Flores and the city as a whole. So with that, I will turn it back over to Nicole. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. So the first petition I'm going to go through is ordinance 1, 2024. Our applicant, as you heard, is GS Valencia LLC, which is a special-purpose entity under GrayStar, and that's how they're connected. Cutler and Hearing is taking care of the land planning, and our attorneys are Gunster. Ordinance 1, 2024, is a Comprehensive Plan text amendment. We're requesting approval to modify Policy 1.3.9.3 of the Transit-Oriented Development TOD District to include Mira Flores Site Plan in the TOD District List of Projects. Now, within the Comprehensive Plan and within the TOD List of Projects, there are a number of different properties that are listed within your Comprehensive Plan. And to provide a visual of that, you can see that there's a map on the screen which highlights the different properties within your TOD districts. And Mira Flores is highlighted on just the northern part, just north of downtown Palm Beach Gardens, which makes it a natural extension of the TOD District initiatives and the goals of that district as well. It's also important to note that within your Comprehensive Plan, and I quote, "within there, it's important to have sufficient densities, intensities, and mix of uses that will support transit and mobility options, as well as creating a lively and vibrant community." So our request tonight for this particular petition is to simply add Mira Flores into your text within the Comprehensive Plan. And so I'm not going to read through all of the text in here, but I've highlighted it at the bottom in red for our requests within here. And so that will conclude my ordinance 1 presentation. And I am going to quickly jump to Resolution 2 and Resolution 3. On these two petitions, we have an expanded project team, and I want to introduce a couple of my team members that are here tonight. We have a great team who is very familiar with working in Palm Beach Gardens, and I really appreciate all of their expertise on this project. Along with our applicant, we have Simmons and White, who is our civil engineer. Our traffic engineer, Chris Hagan, with Kim Lee Horn is here. Landscape architecture is led by Architectural Alliance. Signage is by Sign Drive. Our architects are MSA Architects, and our attorneys are Gunster. Resolution 2, 2024, is a Planned Community Development, PCD Amendment, Requesting Approval to Add 330 Multifamily Dwelling Units to the Regional Center, PCD, within the Mira Flores Parcel. And Resolution 3, 2024, is a Site Plan Amendment Requesting to Remove 32 Units and Construct a 362-Unit Multifamily Apartment Building with Wrapped Parking Garage, Amenities, and Two Waivers. The location of Mira Flores is along Gardens Parkway, Valencia Gardens Avenue, and San Cristobal Gardens Avenue. It is just to the north of some of your major commercial centers in Palm Beach Gardens, like downtown Palm Beach Gardens, adjacent to the Gardens Mall. And it's really within that core district of a lot of different properties in the city of Palm Beach Gardens that you've seen come before you throughout the past few years to make changes and developments, to really set ourselves up for some of these mobility options and items that you've approved in the past. And so that's why we're really excited about this particular project. As Anna had mentioned when she came up here, despite Mira Flores being 27.4 acres, our particular affected area you can see highlighted on the screen is only 3.39 acres. Now, Mira Flores was originally approved and developed back in 1995 with 352 two-story multifamily rental units. And as you can see with the design on the aerial, it was designed as six unique different pods. You have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Each one of those pods has a vehicle entrance either off of Valencia Gardens Avenue or off of San Cristobal Gardens Avenue, and it has its own parking as well. There are a number of different amenities that are included within the existing Mira Flores parcels. Some of them are distinct to their pods, and some of them are community-wide. Another distinct feature of Mira Flores is their pedestrian network. They have sidewalks that run through there, and that was something that we took into account with the project also. The land use and zoning, we are not changing them. The land use, we are providing for. It has a residential high land use, and the zoning designation is PCD. And again, we are not making any changes to the land use or zoning within this petition. And again, we talked about the TOD District properties, so I'm going to skip over this slide. So the PCD Amendment, Resolution 2, 2024, is simply to provide an update to what we call Exhibit B within the PCD. Now, the Regional Center has a history back to 1984. And through the years, this particular exhibit has been updated. When downtown Palm Beach Gardens came through, one of the more recent ones, they provided an update. But it keeps a record of the number of units, the number of hotel rooms, a record of all the different uses within here. So the request tonight for Resolution 2, 2024, is simply to provide an update to this particular document to provide for those additional 330 units. I also want to share that within working with this particular petition, we have, we have worked with the PGA Corridor Association, and we have also worked with the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce. And we have gained letters of support for the policies associated with this particular project, which is included in your packets tonight. So I want to dive into some of the details of our particular site plan amendment, more specifically to this 3.39 acres. So take in a closer look into here, and I'm going to use this rendered site plan as a guide as I walk you through some of the elements of the petition. And so we're providing for 362 units. It's a mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. As Anna had also stated earlier on, we are dedicated to 10% workforce housing within those units. The building is a mixture of seven and eight stories tall, and we are providing for 594 parking spaces in a completely wrapped parking garage, where all of the units and amenities are wrapping the garage so that it will be hidden and providing for units on the exterior. The way that you access the garage in the parcel is either The way that you access the garage in the parcel is either off of Gardens Parkway or from Valencia Gardens Avenue. The Gardens Parkway will lead you to the first floor of the garage, which is not gated, so anyone looking to potentially rent a unit or a guest looking to visit with a resident can enter the parking garage, and then going ahead to levels two and above will be for resident access only. The Valencia Gardens Avenue access is what we would consider and has designed for almost this motor court arrival plaza. So, you have a covered area at the main lobby, and so, this particular area can be for short-term parking, drop-off pickup if you have ride-share coming through, if you have a delivery coming through, and really any sort of future residents that stop here to talk to the office will then be directed to park into the parking garage on that first floor where they have access. And so, one of the really neat features related from a pedestrian level is this enhanced public plaza at the intersection of Gardens, Valencia Gardens Avenue and Gardens Parkway. It's on the southwest corner, as highlighted with the star. And this particular design was very closely designed because, as a team, we wanted to provide not only an access entry, arrival, something exciting, but something more comfortable for pedestrians, because when you walk into that intersection right now, it's not comfortable because there is not a lot happening from a pedestrian scale. And so, we're trying to really bring that scale to pedestrian level by bringing decorative pavers, seating areas, shaded areas, and also providing one of the two identified locations for art and public places as well. When it comes to the amenities for the residential building, not only do we have interior amenities for the residents like co-working and a high-end gym, but on the exterior, we have a resort-style pool deck, and then we also have a dog park and an outdoor courtyard on the eastern property areas as well. These particular amenities are intended to be for resident use only. However, we have the public in mind when creating this plaza that truly wraps around one of the best parts of this project with the views to the lake. So, this pedestrian promenade, we call it, is 20 feet wide, and not only does it connect to all of the pedestrian sidewalk networks, but it also has a functional aspect to it as well. It is stabilized, and so, it will be able to provide fire access, emergency access, in the need that they need to get back there. Tonight's petition is requesting two waivers. One of the waivers I just wanted to highlight really quickly is we are requesting a waiver to reduce the 20-foot landscape buffer along Gardens Parkway, along Gardens Parkway. And the reason for doing that was very intentional. It's very intentional with the TOD and bringing liveliness to the parcel to pull the building up a little bit closer to the street. Again, you have just 10.3 feet at your tightest pinch point on this southeast corner, but it's important to note that the rest of the landscape buffer ranges anywhere between 14 feet and even beyond that 20 feet to 23 feet in certain places with the architectural design. And then, that's really intentional because those first-floor units, and you'll see in some of the renderings, access out to the streetscape. And so, the idea with the design of that is that residents who are renting those units can step straight out onto the street and be able to easily access all of the amenities that are walkable within the area as well. And of course, pedestrian circulation. So, this particular slide just highlights all of the connections to the existing pedestrian networks, not only within Mira Flores, but also along the right-of-ways of Gardens Parkway and also connecting south to downtown Palm Beach Gardens as well. We've talked about some of the items within the site, and I want to highlight a handful of items and items that we have spent a number of hours and time working on just adjacent to the site. And some of these improvements are really related to slowing down traffic and providing additional safety features for vehicles down Gardens Parkway and Valencia Gardens. So, please bear with me because there's a couple of details to go through here, but basically, I'm going to be showing you an existing conditions to show you what the existing conditions are in the property, and then I'm going to show you how we're improving them. And so, walking through here, the first condition I want to show you is we are proposing to close the existing median cut and extend the left-turn lane into downtown Palm Beach Gardens. If you are familiar with this particular road, when you're driving westbound, you're driving over a bridge or over a hill here. So, you're coming down to the property here with a little bit of a line spot, and so, closing this median was very intentional with working with our team and the team of experts to provide a safer condition for vehicles crossing over here. We are also proposing to narrow the existing drive lanes from 12 feet down to 10 feet and 11 feet. Again, that's very intentional, and it's a design technique that has been proven to slow down vehicles as you narrow those lanes. The existing sidewalk along Gardens Parkway is being widened from six feet to 10 feet, again, to provide a more comfortable pedestrian design. We're also providing for a new bike lane and right-turn lanes, not only into the project, but also onto Valencia Gardens. And we're improving the existing crosswalk. There's an existing crosswalk that's simply striped with paint, and then the one connecting down to downtown does have pavers, but what we're proposing to do is to upgrade both. So, not only do they both have pavers, but providing for in-ground lights, which is something that we've started to really use in many of the properties throughout Palm Beach Gardens as well. And here's your new right-turn lane into that main portion of our property. So, how does that relate into our project? Again, we're going through the similar items, closing the existing median cut, and providing that extension of the left-turn lane into downtown. And the reasoning also for extending the left-turn lane is to provide for additional stacking. So, you get vehicles coming up to that left turn, and they're able to provide additional stacking out of that main roadway of Gardens Parkway. Something else that we're adding in here are two locations for an advanced flasher warning system. These two were also intentionally placed. The one that my mouse is hovering over that comes out from vehicles leaving the parking garage are to warn vehicles leaving the parking garage that there are vehicles coming westbound. Additionally, there's a flasher warning system all the way in the furthest east of the property so that when vehicles come over that bridge, they get an alert that there are vehicles coming out of the garage. So, just a couple of things, again, things that we're incorporating in many of the projects in Palm Beach Gardens to make things safer. Here's our new right-turn lane into the project, and then, of course, the right-turn lane onto Valencia. And highlighted in green is our future bike lane in front of our property. The existing sidewalk is being widened from six feet to 10 feet, and of course, our upgraded sidewalks, excuse me, or updated crosswalks, and a future signal when it is warranted. And last but not least, our new turn lane into the project. And the upgrades continue to extend a little bit further east as well, so I'm going to go through a couple of these. So, going a little bit further, excuse me, west, a little bit further west down to alternate A1A, that particular right-of-way has an existing six-foot sidewalk. We're proposing to double the size of it, creating a 12-foot sidewalk, meandering it and providing for landscape enhancements. And if you've had a chance to walk downtown Palm Beach Gardens and even the Devosta Towers, they have the same conditions along alternate A1A, and so, that's to truly provide an extension of some of the design methods which have already been implemented here in the city. We are widening our six-foot, excuse me, our seven-foot sidewalk on Gardens Parkway, widening it to eight feet along this section. Our Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District Lake is being expanded with landscape enhancements, and there is currently a bus stop, a Palm Tran bus stop, in front of our affected area parcel. However, it's not a shelter, it's just simply a sign with a pull-off for the buses. So, we have been working with Palm Tran, and we've identified this location as a new location to not only provide improved pickup, but also to provide for an art and public places, especially approved around the city. And of course, you've got your improved crosswalks with pavers and in-ground lights, and this is how we're walking through some of the plans, with showing how it's included within the landscape plan as well, so providing some of these landscape within the meandering pathways, expanded pathways, and the expanded lake. Now, we can get to some of the renderings of the building. This particular rendering is one of my favorites because this is really the hub, you've got the intersection facing that plaza that I walked you through with some of these pedestrian-scaled elements, in addition to some improved lighting along those sidewalks as well. And so, this particular rendering is really great to identify some of those elements within this plaza, and of course, you can see some of those first-floor units which are stepping down onto the sidewalks. The architecture includes elements like stucco and white wash-brick bands, and also, when you take a look at the roofline, you have a variety of different decorative elements to truly provide just a great design, a very high, high-quality design that is expected in Palm Beach Gardens. The next graphic in front of you is our main entry point off of Valencia Gardens Avenue. This particular view shows you that covered drop-off area I told you about, and of course, you've got your parking garage just beyond here. And this graphic highlights the public promenade that goes along the property. So, this is if you are in Mira Flores looking south, and downtown Palm Beach Gardens is just beyond this, and you can also see the pool amenity in that view. And of course, this is looking west from the Mira Flores portion just to the east as well. And so, it's an extension of that promenade plaza, and of course, you see a couple of the residential amenities tucked in there with the dog park and the courtyard. And a couple of these renderings show some of the amenities. So, again, you've got that beautiful pool deck with a lot of different, excuse me, a lot of different residential amenities, and of course, the dog park as well. And so, I just want to reiterate the quality and the design that our architects paid attention to with working with the city to provide a very high-quality product that we're proud to present tonight. Signage, monument signage. So, I wouldn't typically go through monument signage, but this is also related to our second waiver, so I wanted to go ahead and make sure to walk you through it. We are not providing or asking for any wall signage related to our building within the building itself. However, we are doing monument signage. We're providing one monument sign, and it's called Bellamy because Bellamy is going to be the product in the building, the community that we are creating, so it's Bellamy. And we're providing for one monument sign at the main entry, and there is an existing monument sign at Valencia Gardens Avenue in that landscaped area, and we're providing an update to it because it will really just help with the way finding a vehicle specifically along Gardens Parkway, identify where they can go in to find Bellamy or where they can find Mira Flores. So, I'm showing you this slide because this is what relates to our waiver requests. Our entry sign and our median sign, as you can see, are both tucked and constrained within landscape islands, landscape medians. And the code requires us to have the same amount of landscaping per how tall it is, but due to the size of the sign, we're not able to provide for all of that landscaping. However, we are providing for additional landscaping on other locations. For example, we're providing for additional landscaping through portions of the Gardens Parkway median as to supplement for some of these landscaping waivers that we're asking Design guidelines, we have provide, we are providing for design guidelines. And as you know, through many of the different projects in Palm Beach Gardens, design guidelines just really regulate setbacks, building heights, and permitted uses. So, we are providing this document to provide a guideline to move forward with any future work, but for this, this provides a guideline of what we're proposing, and it's very much in line with what we're looking for tonight. And of course, our waivers, I won't go through them, but they're both of the waivers that I spoke about, about the landscape buffer and also for the landscaping around the signs. And before I close, I wanted to highlight on a couple of things within my presentation at the end. This project has consistency within your Palm Beach Gardens Mobility Plan, and within your Mobility Plan, you provide for a number of what you call multimodal mobility elements. And basically, these are the fundamental elements that are necessary to provide for a safe, comfortable, and convenient multimodal transportation system focused on personal mobility and mobility choice. And so, we align with the mobility elements, accessibility elements, connectivity, visibility, safety, and social value, and we've taken all of these very seriously in our project here tonight. Additionally, within your Mobility Plan, this project aligns with the adopted bicycling plan for Palm Beach Gardens for Gardens Parkway. And the last thing I want to highlight within your Mobility Plan is Vision Zero, which is a multi-part strategy to eliminate multimodal fatalities and severe injuries through the redesign of roads. And you can provide a number of different elements into a project to provide safety elements, and so, these, Vision Zero identifies some of these elements like flashing beacons and also reducing the sizes of the lanes. And from the Vision Zero, it says that the number-one most effective Vision Zero measure is to reduce the width of vehicle travel length, which is what we're doing here tonight along our portion of Gardens Parkway. Additionally, we are providing consistency with the comprehensive plan on this particular petition. The Transit Oriented Development District, your TOD District, provides for a number of different policies and elements within there which we are specifically aligning in, and so, we are providing for the density that we're looking for with the bonuses, of course, and the workforce housing, the 10% workforce housing. We are proposing 2% vertical construction costs for art and public places. We are consistent with the building height within the TOD, and of course, the public spaces related to the plaza area, the public promenade at the lake, and a number of the different public art features. And the last thing I want to touch on is that the environmentally friendly design or the LEED standards that are encouraged within your comprehensive plan, and while this particular project wasn't intended to be submitted to LEED, we use their policies to align, to help us through the process with environmentally friendly design. So, a couple of those things include the alternative transportation. Not only do we have the bus stop access, but we're also providing for exterior and interior within the garage bicycle parking, which will be covered and secure. We have EV charging stations within the parking garage. There are 18 spaces that are spread out throughout the garage that will be available for EV charging, so not only standard space, but also ADA spaces as well. Water-efficient landscaping, innovative water technologies, minimizing heat island effects, energy efficiency, materials and recycling, and construction. So, when we construct the project, trying to do our best to find items that are closer and more regional rather than having to get them shipped. So, paying attention to all of these different elements truly just takes the product and elevates it, and I think that's why we're so proud to be here tonight. And so, that concludes my presentation on those items, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen. I know there was a lot, but there's a lot in this project, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Olivia, do we have anything from a staff presentation? Or Natalie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No staff presentation needed. Nicole did a great job, very thorough presentation. Staff fully supports this project and recommends approval of the project and the associated two waivers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so I don't have anyone wishing to speak. We don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I please get a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 1, 2024? We'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Marcy, you made the motion first. Do you want to go ahead? And then Dana?
Sure.
If anyone has anything else to say.
Sure. I know we're not voting on the actual site plan, but I'll comment on it anyway, but first of all, this is the perfect place for this project. I mean, this, the density, I understand, and, you know, having the affordable housing, this is the perfect place for that. It's walkable, and this is a great design, looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. A couple of questions. Having visited the Landmark, I know how busy it is with the entrance area, and in this case, it's a little bit tight with a very short turn lane and, you know, the stacking around it. I appreciate all the guest parking and a room on the first floor for as much as possible, but just walk me through a little bit about when you have visitors, Amazon trucks, is there someone like at the Landmark to actually direct traffic outside? And are there, in your opinion, ample signs directing, you know, visitors to park here just so that it could be a nice clear area in the entrance, and it doesn't stack, you know, back up into the main drive aisles?
Absolutely. That was a great question. Thank you. We definitely thought about that during the process, and we've thought about it so much that we've written up a operations narrative to actually not only define it now, but also to use as a guide moving forward. So, within that operations narrative, we have information about what it looks like for a delivery truck to come, what does it look like for the mail carrier to come through, what does it look like for a ride-share vehicle to come through, and then a new guest looking for. And then a new guest looking for information about it. And so the way that that covered drop-off was designed was that it was intended for a short-term drop-off pickup, very short-term leave-your-vehicles. It's wide enough to provide for two vehicles at a time. So if there is a car there, there's another one that can come through as well. Additionally, the main lobby for Bellamy for the project is right there at that drop-off. And I know that they're going to have a team at the entrance and Anna and her team is very, very experienced in running buildings like this. And so they're dedicated to making sure to have the best experience for their residents. And so all of that has taken into account with the design. I would also anticipate that there will be people on hand and maybe additional wayfinding signage that might be needed in the future, just to make sure that it's a seamless experience for anyone visiting the site.
And wayfinding to me is very important. And I say the more the merrier because it does help with the flow of traffic as well. So I'm 100% in favor of that, even if more is needed. And I know our code allows for that. So I'm encouraging you to make sure that that's part of the, you know, the final set of plans when permitting. And I do want to say kudos to our staff and also the applicant because I know that this project is, it is a huge project, multi-story, there's a lot going into it. And to make sure that you guys have responded to comments, staff has responded in such a timely fashion to have this. From the start, when I saw this and I told staff this at my agenda reviews, I noticed it on our, you know, we get a list of projects that are upcoming and I saw this, I'm like, Miraflores, what's going on with that? And, you know, when I first heard about it to now, it's not that long of a time compared to the amount of work that has gone into this project. So I just want to say thank you to both of you guys because this is, you know, a beautiful project and in such a short period of time, relatively speaking. Another question that it came about when you were doing your presentation, obviously the parking structure is wrapped with the building. Obviously, we, there would need to be a ventilation system, I'm guessing, for the parking structure. And there is a noise associated with that ventilation system. Is there any type of mitigation? Is it poured concrete for the walls so that that would buffer the noise? Is that something that you can?
So I know that our architect is not here tonight and he could provide additional detail, but I do know that MSA architects, these particular architects, these are some of the styles that they specialize in related to parking garage design and residential design, having those garages wrapped.
Right.
And so it's my understanding that that has been included and recognized within the design itself, but I don't have any additional information on that.
On the side. And curious about the, obviously not the attainable part of it, but a price point for range in price points for the units that are going to be there. Do you have that figured out yet? I would imagine.
I'm going to let Anna answer that one.
So for the workforce housing, it's going to be set based on the latest year of Palm Beach County, 120, up to 120% AMI banned.
I'm talking about the other, the rest of it.
Oh, the rest of it.
90%.
The remaining 90%.
Yeah.
Probably, you know, so I would anticipate kind of a range of 2,500 for the one bedrooms up to 4,000 for the three bedrooms and maybe an average of around 3,200.
Okay, thank you. And really, that's, those are my comments. Great job. I appreciate it. It's a nice project and I'll definitely be supporting it.
All right. Yeah, and just to reiterate, so this is, we'll be voting on Ordnance One. And Resolution Two and Resolution Three were companion items and they'll require council action on second reading, just so everyone's clear as we have discussion. So Bert, you said you had some questions?
I just really, yeah, just two questions and some comments. With regards to the design of the building on the south side, so on the bottom-floor apartments, they'll open up onto the crosswalk, onto the sidewalk to the south side, where there'll be like a gate or something like it is at Alton. You know, Alton has, kind of has those gates and stuff. So I just want to make sure it's not a clear shot out the door on, there's some sort of barrier or gate or something or wall or whatever. I didn't really see that. I'm just curious.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. So these, it's a great question. These units, the first-floor units that you can see within the graphic here, these particular units, they have their, I guess you could consider it their balcony that come out, their patio that has fences on it, which also has a gate that closes and locks. So it's for resident access only, the resident that owns, or excuse me, leases that particular apartment. It's also important to note that there are some grading changes here related to elevations. And so these units actually have a couple of steps down on this area leading down to that main sidewalk along Gardens Parkway. So there's a couple of different elements. Additionally, our landscape architects designed it in a way so that way, they're choosing landscape vegetation to meet SEPT head viewing. So that way, we're trying to provide the best possible design for those particular units in addition to the rest of it, but those ones in particular. So I appreciate your question because we did spend time with staff and with our team really analyzing the best way to make it feel safe, but also comfortable as well.
Thank you for that. And in my opinion, on Gardens Parkway and Valencia Gardens Avenue, the traffic light is going to be warranted. So what is the timing of that light in regards to construction?
I'm going to have our traffic expert, Chris Hagan, with Kim Lee Horn call on it.
Yeah, I appreciate what you've done around the building and the lights in the street and the narrowing the lanes and all that is spectacular. But to me, that's a kind of a crazy intersection now coming out of downtown, so there's going to have to be something in there, I would think.
Yeah. Good evening for the record. Chris Hagan with Kim Lee Horn Associates. My address is 477 South Rosemary Avenue, Suite 215, West Palm Beach. I was sworn in at the beginning of the hearing. Just to address that question, as you all are probably aware, when Lifetime Fitness was originally approved at downtown Palm Beach Gardens and the condition of approval was placed on that project for an annual signal warrant analysis. So since then, one has been conducted on a yearly basis. Last year's analysis actually indicated that the intersection was very close to meeting warrant criteria. The 2024 analysis is actually just kicking off right now, so we'll have the results very soon. And every year has shown it going closer and closer. So we don't know the results at this point. It is possible that it may be warranted now in 2024. But if not, the projections, including Miraflores and the remaining development of downtown, do show that it would be warranted. So there has been some discussion about including those projections in the warrant analysis as, you know, to, you know, have it continue to move forward.
I think it's very well warranted that you should put those future numbers in those projections because that intersection needs to be lighted, period. So that's going to be my presentation of the project is what we need to have done before that project is done. We need to have that intersection lighted. So that's kind of where I stand on it.
Yeah, staff concurs wholeheartedly. We, the one extremely, extremely positive aspect of being able to substantiate this warrant analysis is that it's a city road in this particular case. And so we do have that ability to look at that warrant analysis and look at the criteria more specifically. And believe me, we are waiting for that report and we are trying everything that we can do to accelerate it because we see it very much as a safety issue at this point.
Oh, yeah. When I come out of downtown to turn left to go out to A1A, it's like close your eyes and go left and hopefully it works out because it's, I mean, seriously, it's a tough intersection now and the volume of traffic on that, in that area is expanding and will get greater now with this project. But that was all I had. I mean, it's a beautiful project. Grey star, thank you. Welcome again to our community and what you're doing. The workforce housing inventory addition is very nice and very expected for this particular project. The height density, we expected in the TOD and we expected along the PGA corridor. No surprise there from when the Marriott was built 30 years ago to the Marina that we approved. Everything on the height side is going to be along that corridor, so no surprises on that. Marcy or staff called it the Texas Wrap. Is that what the parking garage, so I learned a new terminology there?
Yes, sir. Texas Wrap.
Texas Wrap. So I love it. I love the interior parking so the exterior beauty can really show.
But we're going to call it the Palm Beach Gardens Wrap.
Palm Beach Gardens Wrap, okay. Caesar salad wrap. And I also love the amenities being in the interior as well. So I did not know about the emergency access support barrier around the side. So congratulations to the public safety guys for that addition or staff as well. That's important for us to get back there if there's an emergency. So congratulations. I love the project and good luck. I'll support it.
All right. Thank you, Bert. Dana?
Going second to last, everyone took my comments. But it is a great project, you know, congratulations. I've seen it several times. You know, I've been through that area. I think most of my questions were answered. The only question I have is on sidewalk lighting. There's a lot of, you know, I guess, construction going on with expanding sidewalks and things like that, making it pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly. I'm assuming there is enhanced lighting, you know, for safety purposes with the sidewalks and things like that. So can you address that a little bit?
Yes, yes. So on our particular parcel where the new building is going, we're providing for new lighting along the south right-of-way along Gardens Parkway. We're also providing for pedestrian-scaled lighting along that public promenade as well. And so you're providing the public promenade lighting and the interior lighting for those amenities for the residential building too. Lighting was a focus with this particular parcel.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So that's all I have.
Anyone else? Carl?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only question I had during agenda review, because I didn't know the answer to this, was that the process of allowing the residents who are currently living there, how they were no longer going to be living there. And it was explained to me, but if there's anything else that you guys want to add, which was all the leases were ending and everyone's aware and they've been given plenty of time, so we're not moving anyone out overly quickly. And I just want to, thank you. Actually, Marcy was just talking about the bike lane, so we're getting that bike lane in a little early because we're waiting for an LI grant to come through from the TPA. So thank you for getting it started. Hopefully, we'll be able to, the timing will let it just keep rolling all the way down. We'll have a really beautifully redone. Phenomenal, honestly, everything you're saying was, I was swooning, right? So Vision Zero, engaging the streetscape, everything about it. So this is reflective of our city and we really appreciate the fact that you've gone through our TOD, you've gone through understanding what we're trying to provide to our residents for safety and access. And so this looks great. So any other questions from council? All right, great. So let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for coming, Nicole. Great presentation. All right, moving along. Does anyone from council have any items for discussion or interest this evening? Speak up. Marcy?
No, just Happy New Year to everybody.
Bert? No? No? All right. I just want to, a quick thank you to our city attorney for getting us to and from Tallahassee safely. We left, we decided to leave on Friday night late, so we booked everything and then took off on Tuesday morning on the very new Fort Lauderdale to Tallahassee, one-hour jet blue, and it didn't get there. Yeah, so we decided Orlando and our staff kicked in right away to make sure we had safe access and we drove through tornadoes from Orlando to Tallahassee to get there to very, very proudly represent our city at the Senate and at the House. So just a thank you for getting us there safely. We'll know in about 57 days if our work was worth it. So that's all I wanted to say. Do we have a city attorney report, sir?
No, I just appreciate the mayor's support too. She was a good co-pilot and we made it, we made it there just fine. And I think she did an outstanding job for the city in front of the Senate Subcommittee as well as House Subcommittee and I'm cautiously optimistic, so.
All right.
Oh, and wait, and of course, how could I, how could I forget Patty? We were on the airplane when they announced that it was diverting after we'd been in a holding pattern and the mayor and I started both feverishly texting Patty, hoping that one of us would get through. So I was like, rent me a car and something speedy. And she, I mean, we landed and I was like, bing! I'm like, here's my email. I'm like, and I text her, I said, have I told you, ever told you that I love you? Because it was just amazing. It was so fast, she got it, she got us a great car, it was perfect. I couldn't believe how cheap it was and it got us there flawlessly. So we wouldn't have had anything to drive to win for Patty. So thank you very much.
Teamwork. This is an honor to be part of this team. So if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.